Bonnie Clemson finally submitted her stuff today. Blake Rear submitted his stuff today. And, uh, what is her name again? I might have listed the wrong crap. Lawson. Yeah, Wilson, I said Wilson. It was Tom Hanks went out and walked through the cities.
Hello.
With the, uh, the World Series. He's a, he's a, even though he's three, he's two thousand miles away, he's an Indian fan, so. And he's from here, he's from Cleveland.
Well, I don't, I don't think he's from here, he lived here.
He lived here, he was with the Cleveland Playhouse.
Yeah, he was with the Cleveland Playhouse for a number of years that he did the, well, in the park, that, that, that stuff that they have in the, by the heights. Yeah, I don't know that he's native here. But he lived here for a number of summers when he was fledgling, uh,
Okay, yeah.
Apparently that's all it takes. They had a few academy awards and twenty million in picture. I wondered what brought you in. Did you use the, uh, did you use the osmosis? That's a little spigot or?
No. That's my goal.
Regular shard water. I mean, reverse osmosis spigot didn't make any difference.
Okay, alright.
Last time I was here, they just put it in. They says, oh, try that, they put that in, I put it in, it looked like dishwater. I took a sip of it and I threw it out, I said, ah, I'm gonna get the stuff out of the tap. So when Dana came, I told him and he goes, oh, you can't drink that until they re, it has to regenerate.
Special meeting of the Sharden Board of Education is called to order. Stephanie, please call all Mr. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Kmean.
Here.
Mr. Stabenko.
Here.
Mr. Rear.
Here.
Mr. Ryder.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mission of the Sharden Local School District is to produce educated, responsible citizens equipped with the skills necessary for success in ever-changing, highly diverse technological world through committed partnership with staff, parents, and community.
Okay, thank you. Item number two and the main purpose for our special meeting tonight is our levy discussion. Stephanie, I'm, I know you have a PowerPoint all ready to go, so I'm gonna let you take it away.
Okay. Larry, this might bother you a little bit.
I don't think so, Stephanie.
Or blind you.
Might want a welding helmet.
Okay.
Did you pay the power bill?
I was surprised this would happen.
Just takes a second. Do you see?
It's the same thing that we have here, so.
Let's go.
This presentation includes the five-year forecast that the Board approved at the October 2007 meeting, which is mandated by the State of Ohio. Okay, the first page. Ellen?
Yes.
Could you pass these to me? The first page is constant, it's the revenue that was projected and it remains the same throughout this presentation. It's based on the Certificate of Resources issued by the County Auditor's Office. Does not include any delinquent taxes, is ninety-eight percent collection on rail and ninety-five intangible, which does vary throughout the forecast because of the new legislation. And historically, our revenue increases three to three and a half percent. Three point four percent is used in this forecast. Uh, the first three columns are the actual revenue for fiscal year 2005, 2006, and 2007. The average change of, if you can see, is five point four percent, but that includes half of the revenue from the new millage that was passed, the five mil levy. So historically, it's around three and a half percent and that's what's used in this forecast. Is there any questions? The second slide. Is exactly the same as the first. This first three columns are the actual expenditures for the district for 2005, 2006, and 2007. Uh, last year, total expenditures were approximately twenty-six point eight million. Uh, this year, the projection is twenty-nine point eight. The total all, in, total overall increase is four point three percent with four percent in salaries, six percent in benefits, and three for supplies and purchase service. Fiscal year 2008, which is our current year. Those projections are based on the actual appropriations that the Board has passed. And in your packet, if you'll note that each line item was highlighted in correspondence with this forecast. The, uh, the negotiated increase was three percent. Uh, four percent is in salaries, that includes all substitutes, any additional staff that might be needed for special aides, and along with our certified and classified and administrators. Benefits projected at six percent historically, that was, that has been eight point six percent overall. Um, I believe six percent's conservative. That had taken into con, uh, account the new benefit healthcare plan that was negotiated, the health savings account. Those savings will be realized not immediately, but over, hopefully over the next five years. Um, three percent is a, also, I believe is a conservative increase for both purchase service and supplies. And as you'll see, this is the forecast that the Board passed last month at the Board meeting. The next page has the current levy of five mils calculated in. If you recall, the levy was a two-year levy, which will expire in 2009. So half of the money will, we will lose that fiscal year. So this forecast puts the additional amount of the five mils that would have to be passed, if it is passed, um, this is kind of a contingency, a projection that the state allows us, that we can put it at the bottom here as, um, a replacement or renewal of an existing levy. Um, looking at two fiscal year 2012, which is the last column, that still shows that the district will have a negative two hundred thousand projected balance. Any question? The next page, uh, this is what I will also present to the Board at the November meeting. Our forecast will be periodically updated as needed with the change in revenue or expenditures. This forecast, the revenue will stay consistent with the first one passed by the Board based on the certificate from the Auditor's Office. The change in this is there had to be an increase in the purchase service. Like I previously stated, it is based on the appropriations that the Board actually approves. On the, and the appropriations are, uh, connected to the budgets. So at the last meeting, the Board approved a contract with an energy, um, the new energy contract, I can't remember the name of it.
Energy Educators.
Energy Educators. And that is approximately forty-five thousand a year. And there also had to be additional money put into legal expenses, um, for special education for the Boards and, um, also there'll be additional costs with the levy. So I had to put additional money into, um, one, another category, which was legal, which did increase the expenditures and will increase the, um, well, the, actually, the percentage is still four point three percent, even with the hundred thousand dollars that the Board will have to add into, um, purchase service. And with everything else being constant, then with the change in expenditures fiscal year 2012, as you recall, the deficit was two hundred thousand, this will now increase to seven hundred thousand. Um, the district can't end any year in the red. But because, as we talked with the revenue, there are no delinquent taxes in here and it's only ninety-eight percent of collections, so we would anticipate that that would be in the black once we get actual figures. But also, as we have stated previously, the district has to have enough money to cover the first payroll in July. And for this school district, this is approximately six hundred thousand dollars. So we do have to have, um, not only we have to be positive, but we have to have enough for that first payroll in July. And this is just a graph, um, that I produced with the, showing that in 2008, we'll actually receive, um, or actually 2007, where the revenue was higher than the expenditures. And then it kinda evens out and from 2010 to 2012, we'll, um, actually expend more than we would actually receive that year. That's why we need a little bit of, um, carryover balance to take us forth for the oncoming years. I did another example. And as you see, this, the assumption is that we would, uh, keep the overall expenditures to three, around three percent. In order to do that, um, I had to decrease the salaries to three percent. I, I think, well, I had to leave the, I could have decreased the, um, benefit section, but that would have been pretty unrealistic. And the remaining supplies, purchase service, the remaining categories, I had to have, leave at zero percent in order to maintain a three percent increase in expenditures. If you look at the, um, it's three point oh four, which is supplies and materials, that is textbooks and anything. Well, there are, there are some custodial supplies and maintenance, uh, transportation supplies, but the bulk of that is for our educational supplies. And as you can see, that two oh, in 2006, it was around nine hundred thirty-seven thousand. Two thousand seven, it was reduced to eight hundred thousand. This year, it is one point two and that includes four hundred fifty thousand dollars in textbooks. So that's why the increase there. And those are actually books that Dr. Clemson has ordered. So to reduce that or, and make it less than a three percent, I don't, it's pretty unrealistic for a district this size. And with just the cost of living increases in purchase services and supplies, I, I don't feel I could reduce as any. This would be the bare minimum for this district.
What would the millage be on seven?
Um, to break even, it would be approximately four mils.
So by, by figuring, um, for instance, personnel service at, at three percent, that's not including money for substitutes, tutors, aides?
Well, actually, I, I would project that if you wanted to keep it at three percent, you would have to reduce staff.
Reduce staff?
Yes.
Okay.
And even benefits at six percent, when historically it's been at eight point six. I mean, we, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't exactly know how much we'll save with the whole savings account.
Or the energy.
Or the energy. And that there are really, I, I didn't really put any, saving, no, because we have no idea.
Well, with, with the energy, with the energy part, we, that's, it is predictable because. Right, at least the minimum. There's a dollar amount, there's a minimum, correct. Now, the biggest savings is, is the year five, after we're done with the contract, which really is not, wouldn't reflect in this. And that would help us in 2012.
So let me ask you, Stephanie, you, you use the, the energy program cost as an expense?
Yes.
I mean, in fact, contractually, they've guaranteed that it will be neutral. Are you able, is, are we able to certify that at all?
I don't think so. I'm sorry.
So we, so we still have to show it as an expense, even though it's in writing that it will be revenue neutral? Okay. So that's.
And that's forty thousand, around forty, forty-five thousand. And that isn't there, and there is something, I mean, um, I guess that would be the closest thing to being expenses. We've kept our expenditures at a zero percent increase.
Okay. The textbook dollar amount was supposed to be spent, I believe, in fiscal six. It was bumped up.
Yes.
It'd been a couple of years ago, so that million two would have been back in 2006 or 2007. And with the, we were fortunate enough to get the, have the levy passed and that's, that's how we were able to purchase those math textbooks. The math books, uh, were about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, I believe, total for K-12 adoption. Three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, K-12 for new math materials. The additional dollar amount in that particular line item was the, uh, business and technology area that's being reviewed this year as well.
The other thing that, um, I'm sure based on where that the Board just completed their strategic plan and there aren't any figures, really, I haven't sat down with Joe and gone over this. He's just actually compiling that data now, so those additional expenditures are in there.
How did we calculate the, or get to the six percent? Was there any credible evidence or prediction we could get out of our broker that talked about what we hope to save by going to the HSA?
Um, we did have some savings that they predicted. We also, um, at last meeting, I don't think you were there, but we did talk about the STRS increase that we are anticipating too. So, there's kind of, you know, yeah, you're saving in one area, but you're gonna have additional, uh, retirement benefits.
And the six percent, is that a number we've used historically?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I have, I, and it was pretty good for last year, um, with our benefits, so.
Okay. Our insurance, I'm sorry. Our insurance fund, um, do you expect any, um, cash to come out of the general fund to fund that at all? Cause I know that, that number keeps dwindling.
It does this time of year, but usually, once, uh, we start receiving more revenue, um, for premiums, that does, historically, have increased.
Okay, well, that's what you can go by.
Yes.
So it's your, your.
No, I have not done any transfers from the general fund, only for the severance, which is the, uh, program.
Okay. Wh- when are we predicting the increase in STRS? I know that's a, um, discussion item.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, at the state level, um, are we looking at second half of next year? Is there any kind of prediction?
It's still in legislation, it hasn't passed yet.
Right, and I guess what I'm, maybe I could have been more clear.
It's incrementally a half percent, I believe, each, each year until it gets to a.
Right.
An increase of.
Proposals employer.
Correct.
So it can happen tomorrow, it could, who knows?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It hasn't come out of legislation yet.
Okay. Does it come out of committee, do you know?
Um, I don't know the answer to that. I, I would project that it will happen.
Okay.
And that's an unfunded mandate imposed on all officials in Sabo, huh?
Right. The, um, that six percent in healthcare, I, I agree, that's conservative, but certainly with, as Stephanie says, the eight, eight point six percent increase was the actual for last year. With the recent negotiations, over a period of time, I'd be able to, we'll be getting closer and closer to that number, that six percent number. With the transfer of all new employees to the HSA, uh, we, we moved from the point of service to the PPO two, POS two, um, there's been some other slight reductions in, in benefits. And for the most part, it's really a cost containment that we're, that we're trying to do. So I, I don't think we'll see that same inflationary growth. I think more people are aware of healthcare costs.
Right.
And we're spending a lot of time with staff, in fact, in the next month, going over what the options are available to continue to inform them so they can be an informed consumer of it.
Yeah, cause there's, there's a difference between a budget amount.
Correct.
And just because the budget is there, that, that doesn't mean that all those dollars are gonna be spent. We, at the insurance committee level, uh, all of the internal discussions, our unions, all the employees, I mean, we've, we've got a plan to implement some pretty serious, hopefully some pretty serious savings in that particular area. So, um, I think some of those cost containment areas are obviously under our control. So you have a challenge, if I can understand this clearly, and maybe there are some people out there that don't understand, you've got a budget that needs to be certified by the county, right? So you have to use, to the best of your ability, credible numbers that, that they will put a stamp on the global.
Yeah, the real estate.
That are, that are realistic. And those expectations are based on historical projections, um, as many facts as you can get, there's some subjectivity, because who has a crystal ball? But you, you deal with as many, uh, facts or trends that you can in the past. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate. And I did state this last week, or, and we passed the original.
I'm just not gonna miss another board.
Forecast, I'm sorry, but.
That's my fault.
If it, if this forecast, if, if we would end the year with five hundred thousand more, that's a good thing. If it's in the negative, it's, it could be devastating because eighty percent, eighty-five percent of our budget is for personnel.
Right.
And that's what it would affect.
Okay.
Stephanie, if you could, uh, refresh my memory on the severance costs from the incentive to retire early. Where is, is that taken out in five-year increments or five-year and eight-year? Or did you take all that money out, if you took all that money out in one month?
One month. We approved that transfer and that's in, uh, 2008 issue.
Okay, so everybody, whether they were getting it in a five-year pay or an eight-year pay, that's paid? It, that's encumbered into a, into a.
Yes.
Into an account, so that charge is not, or a percentage of that charge is not gonna be in subsequent years?
Correct.
And also, am I reading this correctly, that in, if you use a four point three percent increase versus a three point two percent over five years, does that happen in any batteries? Did I calculate that right?
Um, actually.
Okay, what's in the, the?
Actually, at four point three percent, the total expenditures were thirty-four point four million.
Right, thirty-four, and it's thirty-two eight, so it's actually a million.
Million and a half.
Million and a half dollars.
Yes.
Stephanie, what is line item five point oh two oh advances out?
That's for, um, the grants. We can't end the year with a negative. So every year, the Board will advance those IDEA, the grants, the federal grants money. Once that money is then received from the state, then we advance it back.
Okay, is that the same as five oh two oh? One's twenty-five thousand, one's a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I'm not following you. Where are you at?
Line item five point zero two zero?
Mm-hmm.
And then the next one, five point zero three zero? Fiscal year 2008, there was an amount of one million eight thousand six sixty-three?
That's the transfer.
That's transfers out.
That's transfers out.
Oh, okay, all right.
That, and that included the, the nine hundred and ninety-six thousand that was for the severance.
Got it. Okay, same, same question, I guess then. What is the hundred thousand in 2009? Is that the IDEA?
No, the, the hundred thousand in 2009 and a hundred and twenty-five after that. We recall, we transferred eighty thousand to the cafeteria. And then, so that's kind of, in the, that's in the forecast.
Okay.
If we have to do that.
All right.
Plus there's a, um.
Yeah, that's good, better than a surprise layer.
Yes, and we know we're gonna have to transfer to the cafeteria. We don't know how much, it's been anywhere from sixty to ninety thousand a year.
Okay.
Does that include the transfers out for, uh, middle school athletics?
That's, yes.
Yeah.
And that, that's usually fifteen thousand.
No, those two items, they're counted.
Right.
Supplies and materials, are school buses in there? The plan that we have for replacing school buses?
No.
No. Are school bus replacements in this plan?
It is in the permanent improvement.
Right, it's the other.
So this is.
Oh, yes, the oh oh three account, it's the one mil. And that, that is really taking a lot off the general fund to have that permanent improvement for our buses because as you recall, that the buses were put on hold for years. And, uh, we were behind, I think, when I got here, at least two years, and I'm not exactly sure how many buses.
Yeah, the buses that were replaced were, they were still roadworthy, but not by much.
Yes. We had nineteen ninety buses on the road.
Yeah, with two hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on them.
So that one mil permanent improvement has been a lifesaver for the general fund. It really has. Plus, uh, and with the technology.
I was just gonna say, all the elementary school computers and everything else.
Otherwise, we'd be behind in that as well. That was also taken out of the general fund in the past year.
That dollar amount, right. With that, with the one, one mil permanent improvement, that will allow, and if it does continue, that will allow us to get back on course with our technology purchases. I know that's been a concern of everyone's, um, to the tune of about two hundred thousand a year. It'll allow us to replace four buses annually to the tune of about two hundred and seventy thousand a year, as well as some maintenance vehicles. And we can also purchase textbooks out of that particular item as well. I don't believe we did that this year, we took it out of the general fund. We have so many needs in buildings and grounds and transport and to get back on track. Uh, so that PI, PI is very valuable to us, as well as some additional expenses in the near future. And we've had some gym refinished, the gym floors refinished, although I think we might have taken that out of the general fund too.
Yes, and it passed. Yes, in the past.
In the past, we have. So.
Joe, you said two seventy for four buses, two hundred for-
Right.
Computers.
Computers. Would that be every year?
Yes. I have, we have forecasted out. If we follow the strategic plan, as it is right now, in technology, this year, we're spending about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. That's to upgrade the entire elementary. Next year, the plan is two hundred and twenty-two five. The following year is two hundred and fifty-five five, and then we back it down to two hundred thousand, as we're kind of into the mode of replacing and renewing. This year, elementary, next year, high school, following year, back into the middle school, and probably continuing to upgrade the district, as well as two thousand and ten, eleven, two thousand and eleven and twelve, two hundred thousand to keep us rich in technology.
So that one mil PI component is really helping keep us on task as far as our strategic plan is concerned with-
In the area of technology.
Technology.
And in the area of, well, as far as strategic plan, basically, the area of technology.
Technology, yeah. Okay.
What does the cycle look like, then, for computers, as far as longevity? Is that a five-year cycle?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And that's what the performance audit recommended?
Correct. As well as the strategic plan did the same thing. So it's right in line with both documents. It's a heavy dollar amount, but I have to tell you that, you know, we have computers in the elementary schools right now that are over eight years plus. The original purchase was out of general fund, originally by the board, and then over time, you know, you have to cut some areas. That's just one of the areas that we just couldn't afford to do. That's what happened with the buses, and that's what happened with textbooks.
Now, is that cycle, Joe, just replacement, or any additional technology?
That's, it's replacement of the items that we have. So if we have four computers in the classroom, we will replace those with four new computers in the classroom. Next year's, that's this year, next year's dollar amount adds a little bit, as far as some AV-type materials, like the DVD players and things of that nature, some televisions. And then the following year, is a little more liberal in the dollar amount, to begin to add some technology in into classrooms, additional things that we don't currently have.
So not just replacement?
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe as costs come down on that, too, we might be able to improve the number.
We'll get more for our dollar, correct. In fact, that's why, that's why it's only a hundred and seventy-three thousand this year, because of the model we're using in the elementary school. As you remember, we piloted the computer labs, we have one super unit powering four monitors and four keyboards. That's why it's a hundred and seventy-three instead of over two hundred thousand this year.
Okay, so PI, computers, buses, building improvements?
Building improvements, such as gym refinishing, locker, physically replacing and/or painting lockers.
Parking lot.
Parking lot repaving, anything that we have to do with the exteriors of the building, such as doors, door replacement, boiler replacements.
Do we have a five-year capital improvement plan?
We do now, but we're developing that.
Okay.
The one mil PI, we developed, what, six thirty or some?
Six hundred and something.
Six fifty?
Six hundred and fifty-five thousand, that's what we have projected all the way out.
That's a hundred percent collection.
Right, at a hundred percent collection, and you've got-
Four seven between buses and computers.
Yeah, four seven, nearly five hundred thousand spent.
Correct. That's why I asked about the five-year plan, if we could look at that and see if we've got some holes in there. Maybe one mil is not enough. I don't know, I'm just-
Well, I've been doing some of those things, and pretty close to sharing with the board that five-year capital improvement document. The biggest part of it are the buses. Second issue is the technology component. Those two things pretty much eat up to six hundred and fifty-five thousand. In addition to that, the money that's left can go for those general repairs that we've been taking out of general fund. So we can free up general fund money to do some other things in classrooms, classroom supplies and things of that nature.
Again, it seems, my memory, we have around forty buses, don't we?
Yes, sir.
So when we speak about replacing buses at four per year, that's really a ten-year life cycle on the buses. So it sounds, it may sound to some as, you know, what do they need four new buses a year for? Well-
Ten percent of the way.
It's, every ten years, you'll get a new bus to replace that unit. You know, buy a unit, and it'll be online for ten years, roughly.
Ten years in Florida probably isn't too much. Ten years in Chardon is a different story.
Correct.
Unfortunately, the state increased their reimbursement requirements and said your bus used to be a hundred thousand miles in the next number of years to ten, ten years and, you know, increased mileage.
The other thing that permanent improvement add is that we don't have any really contingent money in here, say, a boiler would go down. And to take that out of the general fund, see, you kind of need a cushion for emergencies, I guess is what I'm saying. We have none in our general fund.
Yeah, what you've presented us tonight-
Shows that there's-
We had no flexibility, very little, very little flexibility.
Status quo.
Yeah, status quo, you know. I would hope our philosophy is to move the district ahead.
Let me share, I want to share. Stephanie, do you have any more to add about that?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Put this together, just, we've maybe spent a few minutes on this tonight. You know, I'll continue to update you as I update this document. This is year one implementation schedule. Kind of the first round, I've got a couple for the audience, but not one. On the front, again, year one, this is this year. Total need outside of the things that are already budgeted is a million, about a million dollars. We currently have budget of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, it's right on the front page. In the area of curriculum, which is on page two, the need is five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. We currently have items budgeted in our budget right now, already encumbered, four hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five. And those amounts really are on page three, mathematics courses study, purchase new textbooks, and the nine through twelve business and computer science courses study. Again, three fifty-five, six sixty-five for math, and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred for business and computer classes. Okay, so those are already in the budget. What's not in the budget are some additional software on page two. And again, under two D, implement computer tutorials to enhance classroom instruction. As we get computers that work and work efficiently, we're going to be looking at, and again, as you can see, starting date is this year and it's ongoing, anywhere between twelve thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in additional software. That's licenses for each building, for each particular computer has a license cost, so that gives us some flexibility there. We're looking at some enhanced reading instruction programs, got some tutorial items, and some of those have some very large dollar amounts, if the software companies keep ratcheting up. Computer prices go down, software seems to be going up. So that's that particular item. And as you can see, some of the other items, we already have in our budgeted accounts, so I really didn't put a dollar amount on those, but we are going to try to ferret all those things out so you can see exactly what it actually costs. In technology, the need is a hundred and eighty-three nine. We have budget a hundred and eighty-three nine. We have a new website that we went online with, that was a ten thousand dollar item. That's going to, that's going to be an expense, really, every year. On page six, you can see the breakdown, I put three years there on page six, prioritize funding allocation, disposal, recycling plan for obsolete equipment, and then that's less than five years, computer, the student ratio, year one, one for every, one computer for every seven students, year two, one to six, year three, one to five. On the FAR column, you can see it's a hundred and seventy-three thousand, just for the computers this year, two twenty-five next year, and two fifty-five the following year. Under school funding, that component of the strategic plan, the need's about forty thousand dollars. And again, that's for the information that would be printed, professionally printed and distributed. There's nothing budgeted right now, because quite frankly, we don't have the money to do that. However, there's a lot of things we can do, so we are, we are doing, between myself and Ellen and Stephanie, there are some things that we're going to continue doing, that really are part of our salaries, and that those are budgeted accounts, and there's really zero additional funds. The, on page eight, there's a publication, an issue brief that describes issues for public consideration. Again, that's, those are ballpark dollars, it's about anywhere between ten, twelve, thirteen thousand dollars to do a mass mailing of a profession, including the preparation of the document. Certainly want to have something that's nice looking, that people will actually take a look at and read. So that's the forecast of that dollar amount. Page nine, there's nothing additional. Page eleven, facilities, demographic information. To do a true demographic study, we're looking between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars, how many people are here now. We can certainly do some enrollment trends, which we're currently doing. However, to have it done professionally, it's a little more reliable information, and just doing it based on projections of enrollment, as well as some additional information out to the community, under item three, again, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars, that's for a printed document mailed to everybody. That's what it costs us to give to our community.
Joe, can I ask, what's the benefit to having all of that information? What do you do with it?
Well, with the demographic information, there's been talk in this district since nineteen ninety to build some type of new school. If we found through a demographic chart that we were projecting to decline in enrollment over the next fifteen years, to the point of going from thirty-four hundred students down to twenty-eight hundred, that would seriously make us think about what we had to do next, as far as surveying the community, what will they support, what type of school building, what grade configuration. If it does decline, do we need four elementary schools? If it increases, do we need an extra elementary school? Do we need to redistrict? Do we need to build a different type of building? That's valuable information, and to get information that we can share with a more reliability than our own, it costs us to do the study.
Okay.
Staff development, need a hundred and forty-five thousand, we've got budget a hundred and forty-five thousand. That's the professional development items that we already have, and we already make use of. Also counts for substitutes, and some of those items that Stephanie talked about, putting that percentage in for teachers when they're out. You know, every time a teacher's out, seventy-five dollars for a sub, that comes out of that dollar amount as well. We are looking at, in particular this year, some additional training of classified staff. We opened up our community ad to all classified employees for additional computer classes. We had a very good response there, that costs us a few dollars each time we offer that. We're also have, on four different occasions this year, our maintenance and custodial staff will be doing in-service. The first one is the day before Thanksgiving, in which they're going to do things such as, this is how you properly strip a floor, this is how you properly clean baseboards, so we're going to actually go back to ground zero. And part of that plan is to in-service them on appropriate techniques, whether you've been here year one, day one, or a twenty-five-year veteran, they're all going to go through the same thing, so we can systematically improve. And again, certificated and licensed staff, those are typical expenditures, anywhere from thirty-five thousand, a hundred and ten thousand per year, depending on what we're doing. We're investigating math this year, computer tech. We're also looking at phys ed and fine arts in the next couple of years, too, so that helps pay for that dollar amount. On page thirteen, the need's fifty-three thousand dollars, budget amount is sixteen. Again, that's pretty self-explanatory. We're looking at doing something with a grandparent program in our elementary buildings, K five, that has some dollar amount to it. It's not significant, but it does cost us every time we add something to the budget. The actual budgeted amount is sixteen thousand dollars. That's the calling out program, the outbound calling program. We're investigating that as well. And that's, again, that's a top price, that's a Cadillac version, which allows us to dial out to select groups. It also gives us voicemail capability for our teachers. Right now, we currently do not have voicemail capability. You call, you message with the secretary, and you may get it, you may not. It's through no one's fault, but when you do things by paper, the chances of getting the message are lessened than if they had a voicemail box to move toward. And again, it tries to get us up to what current technology is, what people in the professional world and other, private sector have had for years, we're trying to get competitive anyway. So that particular program is about a sixteen thousand dollar expense, recurring fee of about fifteen thousand a year. And we have some Pepsi money that we're going to use, we also have a tiny bit of money in our communication director's budget that we're going to kind of couple together, and once we finish our research, we'll bring that to the board for approval as well. The main concern is parent communication, but primarily the safety feature. As we had that bomb threat on September twenty-fifth, it would have been nice for me to be able to dial and say, yes, we had it, things are under control, your children are safe, you go out in a matter of four or five minutes, everybody that we had, either email, text, or cellphone, or home phone, it would have diminished the number of rumors that we had after the fact, and assured parents that we were on top of it. Again, another improvement we can take a look at. Safety and security, there's, dollar amount wise, for the first year, there's nothing, and there's nothing budgeted, other than what we already have in our budgeted accounts. So nothing above and beyond what we're currently doing. Doesn't mean we're not doing anything, it means that in this first year, we're not buying things from this plan's perspective. There are still some safety things we're doing, such as testing out new equipment at the high school for cameras and recording devices, but we don't have anything budgeted at this moment for that. You can expect to see that as part of the PI budget for next year and the following years, as part of the capital improvement plan, to the tune of about thirty-five thousand dollars annually for safety, as far as stuff, like recorders and cameras and things of that nature. The new buses are coming, part of the bid is having the new updated digital cameras in the buses, so every time we replace four buses, those are four new cameras we have. That seems to be a concern as well, because Murphy's Law, whenever there's a bus incident, we go and look at the tape, and you can't read it, can't see it, or it didn't work that day. So we're moving forward. We're looking at doing the similar document for each of the years of the strategic plan, so at least we know where we're going. And it'll help to both help contain cost and to use the money more wisely that the taxpayers have given us to do, using the performance audit, using the strategic plan, and this implementation schedule, coupled with additional dollars. I think we have a reasonable package for our taxpayers. It allows us to move forward.
Okay, again, this is year one of the strategic plan.
Yeah, it's year one, it's not all encompassing, and we're continuing to tweak things, and you'll see that there's a lot of assignments to myself.
Yeah. Yeah, you're going to clone yourself, or how are you going to do that?
Some of those, obviously, there are five, six people that report to me, but I will be the signature person off on some of those items. It's not, I certainly can't do all of them, but there is a responsible party, and we're going to continue to tweak that, so that the burden of implementation is a little more broad than just the superintendent's office. It's going to take you a while to digest this, as it takes a while just to put it together, but at least we have, it's a point to begin discussion, and it's a point to begin so that everybody knows that the strategic plan is moving forward. The next piece is the five-year capital improvement plan, which is vital to our, we have to do it. And again, we have it sketched out, but nothing's fully up.
Anyone have any questions?
Appreciate the hard work in this, Joe.
Can I ask a question of you, Stephanie? I want to go back.
Sure.
I'm going to test your memory. The current levy is for fiscal years seven and eight, or eight and nine?
Well, we'll put the whole amount this year, half for next year.
For next year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is oh nine.
If you look at, when we put this two-year levy on the ballot, and we forecasted what this number would be, under expenditures, how close are we to our forecasted? Go back, it's been, what, year and a half? When did we put this on the ballot? Bear with me on the times.
Six.
So when you forecasted what we would have left, prior to having to go back out, how close do you think we're going to be to that number?
I might have to go back and research that.
What's your gut tell you?
I would tell you that every year, we do not spend what is totally appropriated.
Right.
When we sit down with all the administrators, the principals, and they set their budgets, they buy what they need. They do not come to May first, when the requisitions, and say, okay, I have ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars left in my budgets, I'm going to spend it.
Right.
They don't, we don't do that.
Because we've implemented some pretty serious savings.
Correct.
Right? Right? So you and I didn't talk about that question beforehand, did we?
And we did, no.
So, so I just want to make sure that-
We have had additional money in our ending balance.
Right.
Joe and I, the one year we talked about this, we planned on ending the year with seven hundred thousand. So that we could cover payroll.
Right.
With our encumbrances, that's, that's, we were pretty much on that figure. How much more percentage wise? I would say probably, I hate to say without actually looking at it, but I would say we're pretty much within three percent.
The, the point I want to make is that, again, if you want to talk about past history, we've been able to show that we've been able to stay within a budget, it appears. And we've also taken steps to make sure that we also do things to try to save additional dollars to keep us there, so we don't exceed our budget. And as you've said, we've, we've never had a year where we've gone above and beyond our budgeted expenditures.
Everyone, I will tell you, is very conscious, conscious of their budget and what they, to the extent where the superintendent came into my office, what, about two weeks ago? And said, here is a transfer for two dollars and twenty cents. And he says, is this necessary? And I said, not really. We're talking about thirty million dollars here. This is two dollars and- But that's how conscious people are of their budgets and what's in them and, and that is a good thing. This, this district is exemplary in that fact. And I did not set up that, those procedures, those were here when they came. And they work. They really do. Because we do, the staff goes above and beyond where their budgets are concerned. And being very frugal and conscious of what's in.
Joe, I'm going to test your memory now. When the energy people came in, again, contractually, we've got a, a zero out of pocket. The districts that you talked to, realistic savings, people in the northern part of the country, not, again, Tennessee or Florida. I mean, they, they were talking the potential for hundreds of thousands of dollars over multiple years.
Our, our projections, and, and again, if my memory serves me correctly, there's a, there's about a fifty thousand dollar expenditure. Savings are about, the, the cost diversion of, because we're, we'll be monitoring the electricity, monitoring the boilers, changing habits of people. The cost diversion, the total cost diversion for year one is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So the amount that we're paying into fuel and to, to our electrical bill, instead of that hundred and twenty thousand, it's a lot more than that. But that hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be able to pay for the salary of the person, the cost of the program, and the additional amount can be used for other items.
Of half of this.
Correct. So in, in the four years that we're under contract with them, over that four-year time period, the goal is to train people, to re-educate people. To get these systems in place, so when year five comes, we're looking at about a two hundred thousand dollar cost diversion, so we can use that two hundred thousand, that's quarter of a mil.
From year one?
From year, from, from, no, in year five. In year five, it'd be about a two hundred thousand dollar cost diversion. That's, that's the anticipation of, of it, if we maintain the same program. Year one, two, three, and four, that the savings is ratcheted up because, because of re-educating people. And again, over four, I believe over a four-year time period, some two hundred thousand dollars over that first four years. Because you don't have the expense of paying for the company in year five, the, the dollar amount is, is a little more significant. That's just one item that we've deferred costs from one area, so we can spend the money more wisely somewhere else. Do the same thing in transportation, do the same thing with some realignment of staffing. We also did some realignment of staffing as far as where the money comes from. Our special ed director and her assistant are taking out of grant funding, which hadn't been done before, which frees up some general fund money. Just the, Stephanie said that, that everybody being so frugal and they're all conditioned not to spend money. It's almost difficult for them to get together, to put a budget together, because they said, we don't need that. Well, we need materials and we need supplies for, to operate the schools. Yes, we can do it this way. So they're very good about that. And, and they've been conditioned over a long period of time.
You're also looking at some additional grants, aren't you?
Yes. Looking at an after-school program again for, for next, next year. And we're also right now looking, I'm still intrigued by the charter school. That's, we're progressing with that as well. This is year two of the plan. This is the year that we, that a governing board would be developed, so on and so forth, and I'm gathering the resources as we speak on that. That can be done in-house. The, the rules are such that a charter school could happen in one wing of the high school. These classroom A, B, and C are charter school. So it could be done right here in the building. We're still working on some of those bugs and we're still visiting other programs. Again, to bring additional services to kids, using somebody else's dollars. And again, if we can do that, that would free up other money to do other things. Special education, we're looking at the number of aides we have in classrooms. We're looking at the number of, some of those are dependent on the student's IEP. Some of them have just been acquired over time and we've all gotten comfortable to having them. Maybe we don't need them, but we're analyzing all that information this year. So again, not that we're trying to, to nitpick every single employee, on one hand, but the other hand, yes, we are. If, if we can get by tomorrow and get the same, same service without you, then do we really need you? That's kind of the mentality we've been looking at. Bringing children back to the district, we have had significant cost savings. We're also looking at, can we transport our children with our own bus drivers? Even if we have to hire another bus driver or a van driver, instead of spending the two hundred dollars plus to transport a student somewhere, can we do it ourselves? We believe we can and we're investigating that. That's this year's plan. To allow our home drivers, Chardon employees, to drive some of these special needs kids to more places, rather than the subcontract, the special, special vans and private transportation. That'll be a huge savings. So if we're paying our own drivers, you know, the hour of the rate and the, and the consumption of the bus fuel and things of that nature. As opposed to paying between a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars per day per student, transporting them, that's significant savings. We, we will always have to transport some students by private means because of the complexity of their disabilities.
Right.
But I believe that there's a, I would probably venture to say, half the students we transport that way can be done by our own employees. And we're looking at that. Again, another way to contain costs.
How do we update the public on where the state stands as far as school funding is concerned, our unconstitutional funding of our schools? I mean, what are our local legislators saying about any of that? Is there really any change?
From state funding?
No. In your, in your opinion?
No. And, and my opinion, the, the changes that we will see will not impact our district. I, I don't believe that's going to happen. The new funding amendment that's going to be coming out, if it's going, if it gets enough signatures for the ballot, I think in two thousand eight, November two thousand eight. That, over a period of time, will have some significant impact on us. Probably not in my lifetime. But, but that's the next round of funding and changing things the way they exist. Because the current funding formula, the way it's, the way it's been delivered and tweaked over the years with the different add-ons and takeoffs and charge-offs. It's really, instead of getting the true fifty-four hundred dollars, I mean, Chardon schools get eighteen hundred dollars per student.
Right.
So simple change, like, simple to us, not simple to legislation, because where do they get the money?
So our budgeting process, we, we try to go out and we forecast five years, as you've done, Stephanie. In your professional judgment, you don't see any change in our funding mechanisms in the next, in any-
Not in the next five years.
Five years.
No. There's a lot of talk, there's continued talk. I don't really see it happening, and if it does, I don't know how much impact it's going to have on our area. Our per pupil valuation is significantly higher in this area. And that's why in, in the funding formula, we receive less money than some-
Can you explain that to people who may not understand what you just said?
In, well, in our time constraints tonight, no.
Well, just, just the Cliff Notes version.
Cliff Notes version?
I just think it's important to understand, you know-
The state says that we get approximately fifty-four hundred dollars per student. Because of our location, 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 our property values, cost of living, things of that nature. Our per pupil valuation is significantly higher here than it is of all the districts below I seventy south. This part of the state, because of that, in the funding formula, by the, by the way that things are charged off and we don't get credit for certain items because of our high- Because in essence, we're expected, because we're, we have more money in this area, to be able to support the schools locally.
We're a quote-unquote rich county.
Correct. And that's deceiving, because it's not, it's not necessarily true. Through the funding formula, we only get eighteen hundred dollars out of that fifty-four hundred dollars per student. The rest has to be made up by local tax dollars. That's why we're so heavily dependent in Chardon schools, most of Jogga County, most of Lake County, Cuyahoga County, we're dependent on local tax dollar to, to run our schools. Because, because of the way the current funding formula exists, we don't get full, we don't even get the full funding they say we're supposed to.
Four thirty-six hundred short.
Correct.
Just on that fifty-four hundred.
Just on that item. Now, if you talk about a special education child, we may get eighty-five hundred dollars on a forty thousand dollar child.
Or a hundred thousand dollar child.
Or a hundred thousand dollar child. Now, we do get some of that money back. Catastrophic aid, we get some dollar amount back, but nothing near what it, what it costs.
Okay. I just know the last time we went to voters, we were complimented on presenting the facts.
Yes.
And I, the, the facts two years ago, some things are still the same. There are things that we still have to deal with. And I would imagine that as we get into this particular campaign, facts are going to be an important part of our campaign as well.
And, and I have to tell you that most of the things that we, we described last night, pretty much carbon copy. The numbers might have changed a little bit, the rates have changed a little bit, but the percentage, that, that local percentage is pretty much the same. State share is the same, federal share is the same. And we go from there.
The reality is, this board has done, I think, everything we could to look at items and try to maximize savings on those items. The reality is that we're still shooting at a moving target. We, an example would be the transportation money that was saved by changes in the transportation department. A portion of that was offset by the increased fuel costs.
Sure.
Which none of us could, could predict. Now, the picture would be worse if we hadn't made those changes and saved the money. But to, to say, well, you saved X dollars because of this, that was at a point in time, draw a line in the sand. At that point in time, on paper, we saved X dollars. And then subsequently, we pay eighty cents more a gallon for fuel or, or more for some other insurance costs or so on. And again, the, the, the uncertainty of special needs issues that may or may not come into a district. And, and none of us have any prior knowledge that, that all of a sudden, we're responsible, rightfully, morally so, and, and legally so, to, to service these families. But we can't sit here and go through these documents and say, well, that's what it's going to be next year. We don't know.
We don't know.
But there's a positive here, that you took action, you found ways to save money, you found ways to stay within your budget. It's been consistent year after year after year. This budget assumes the same thing. That will, if put into place to find dollars, we're going to do it, but we're still going to live within our budget. And we're still going to substantiate everything that we do.
Well, when we put the last levy on, we asked the voters for two years to make these savings, and I think we've done that.
The next, I mean, the next step, after we come to some consensus on what the issue's going to look like, is to, is to continue to tell people what we've done in that two-year time period. I mean, there, there have been a number of programs-
So you'll have a report card?
Absolutely. Our own in-house report card. This is what we've, we've done. This is the dollar amount that we've either saved or contained. And Blake brought up a good point. We, we made some reductions in transportation. Some of those, some of that dollars we saved was spent on fuel. That's just one of those things. Had we not done that, we, we may have gone over budget in one particular area.
Where, where do we go from here? We have to have this buttoned up and at the board of elections by December twentieth. When I say this, we haven't even really arrived at a plan yet.
Well, my next question was going to be, be to Joe and Stephanie, what is your recommendation based upon these forecasts and these, and these projections?
Don't we talk dollars instead of millage at this level? How many dollars we need? And then isn't it the auditor who informs us what our millage will be?
Well, we've, the resolution that we received from my legal counsel actually has the millage.
It has the millage. All right.
I think we're in a unique position because it is a term. So we have a little leeway here as far as replacement and all of those terms.
Now, can you say that again?
Because we are looking at the end of a term levy, instead of asking for, you know-
Oh, because of the reappraisal or the, or the increase in, in evaluations in new, new, new dollars and so on?
That is correct.
Okay. Now. We haven't, between when this levy was passed and when we would pass a new one, there hasn't been a reappraisal, has there?
No.
No.
So it's, we're going to get the same dollar amount, but any new construction or new development that wasn't there when it passed the first time would, would be taxed this time, correct?
That's true. There, there will be a slight increase in valuation because of that, but there, if it's not a reappraisal year or-
Not on the individual?
We're basically looking at a slight growth with the replacement, but nothing substantial. I used actually the six hundred and fifty-five thousand valuation or per mil.
Per mil.
Per mil to, for-
This forecast along with the other, there's the, I mean, that's just what we looked at tonight on the slide. To show that, that we can make it for five years. There wasn't any additional. We, we stayed at the five mil. Because of what Joe just said, being able to do cost containment, we were able to stay within those boundaries.
So we're looking at a five mil with an additional one mil PI, the same thing that we're under?
That's what this forecast shows.
That's what this forecast.
At the four point three.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
At the four point three.
Now, not to complicate matters, but in, in looking at the preliminary capital plan and some preliminary additions to keep pushing our program forward. If indeed we go with a five, five mil operating and a one mil permanent improvement, I'm still charged with finding another half mil somewhere in cost containment. In order to, to keep our district growing, I, I'm going to need another, about another three hundred thousand dollars a year, in addition to that, to do some things in the district.
Okay, you used half a million and three hundred. Three hundred a year times five.
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm looking at about another three, again, I, I believe we can do it through cost containment measures. But what I'm trying to do is to validate the need for the five mils.
So even with-
Even with five mils.
We'll find a way to save money to make up for that. So even with cost containment, you're still a half a million short?
Yeah, prob, approximately.
Is that what you said? I don't want the words here.
No, three hundred, three hundred thousand short.
Okay.
We want to do some additional items. No, I'm talking about-
Three hundred a year, a million and five after five.
Per year. But again, based on the fact that we have a pretty good track record going of containing costs these last, last two and a half years, I believe we can do it. Because we need to, we, we do need to add some things. The five mil operating pretty much maintains what we have. I need to find some grant, either through grants or some additional cost containment, to find another three hundred some thousand dollars. And I, I believe that we, we have the ability to do it. I don't have a crystal ball. The expenses could go up that amount and we might not be able to do some of those things.
So your recommendation is five plus one?
Is, is the same millage amount, yes. I mean, I, I think that's what we need to operate the district.
Did we hear you say that?
At a, at a, and I have to be honest with you, at, at a minimum. I, I don't think that we, I don't think that we could, could do a seven or eight mil levy here. It just, we will not pass in the current economy. However, based on the two-year track record we've just had with the five and the one, I believe that the public is, I think we have a good track record- I believe that the public is, I think we have a good track record with the community. I believe that we have a good rapport. We haven't had anybody coming to board meetings beating us up over misspending money. Quite the opposite. They've come and they've complimented us on doing various things for the community, using the tax dollars wisely. From negotiations to some of the concessions we had with both groups with the healthcare, those are significant savings, not only year one, but over a long period of time. We're just beginning to realize the savings for the board from our healthcare programs. The energy management program, as well as using our staff differently and more efficiently, both in the classroom and in the classified areas. As Stephanie said, 85, 86% of our budget is staffing.
We should, I mean, when we had the incentive to retire early.
Yes.
That was projected over a five-year period.
Correct.
So, over those five years, we should realize some savings, especially since you encumbered all the funds that are going out. We should have some savings in payroll during the, well, it's four years from here, right?
Yes. And many, not all, but many of the employees that we hired were either one or two years out of college, relatively cheap in comparison to the top-end dollar that we paid. Now, in some areas of specialization, we had a math teacher we had to pay a little bit more money for, as we talked about, we gotta hire the best candidate, and we're fortunate enough-
Well, and that math teacher wasn't replacing a year employee.
Correct.
That was almost a trade-off on that.
Right, but there are some situations where we had to buy somebody more expensive than a brand-new person, because we pledged to hire the best candidate for the job, and we did that. And in some situations, we had to pay a little more, but in most of them, we found some excellent candidates to replace people leaving with better experience.
Is that in our report card too, do you think?
That will be in our presentation, yes.
In a perfect world, you would be able to manage a staff-
Right.
Into, round figures into thirds. A third in the first 12 years, a third in the second 12 years of their term, and a third in the final 12 years, if you use 36 years instead of 35. So that at no point in time would you be-
You have a bubble.
Yeah, have a bubble at one end or the other, and you'd have, theoretically, always have experienced staff to cover the inexperienced staff and learn from the whole system, in a perfect world. It doesn't seem to always run that way, but it would be nice if you could.
We were able to knock off a portion of that top bubble, as I think Paul had suggested, that same concept, third, 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 we've been very heavy on that top end, both experience-wise and the various degrees people have had, and the number of hour, additional coursework that they've had. We're able to bring that down a little bit, and it's not balanced third, third, third.
No, no, I didn't know that it ever was.
There's some significance to the fact that we took off a good portion of that top end and spread a little more to the middle, so I was comfortable with it. Wish we could've got a few more, but we did just what we said we were gonna do, and it worked out, not gonna work.
Well, not that we had, other than we made the decision, but it was astounding to me that the groups that we brought in said, you will have this number.
Yes.
And you will have that number at our first meeting. And they were there. Couldn't believe that.
That's exactly right. Well, we've done some things in the past two years, thinking differently, trying to find creative ways to use tax dollars, and again, in the campaign, we're gonna certainly need to illustrate those things in a variety of ways, both public forum and written capacity, and what I call the dog and pony show, where our levy group goes out and does presentations to people, so we can answer some of those information, present factual data to people.
Okay. We take a few minutes for the tape to change, please. Okay.